I want to thank, right off the bat, our sponsors for this event. We are a 501(c)(3), and the only way that we are able to do these types of events is with the support of our underwriters. And so, our underwriters for today's event are the Tribal Alliance of Sovereign Indian Nations, the Western States Petroleum Association, KP Public Affairs, Perry Communications, Capital Advocacy, Lucas Public Affairs, the Wydeman Group, and the California Professional Firefighters.
So, rather than do introductions, I figured that we would just start without opening statements. But I wanted to start with Amy, with a fundamental question. Why does school boards matter?
As an elected trustee for Butte County Office of Education going into my third term, and being responsible for the training and oversight of that division at CSBA, I think school boards, for me, matter as they are the largest body of elected officials at the closest grassroots level to public education in providing governance and oversight and accountability for the over 6 million students in California. They represent districts from the large, from 700,000 students to the smallest districts with 20 students, and they all have the same responsibility. They have the responsibility to set the direction, to identify policy and practices and bylaws that they follow based upon education code. They provide support to the superintendent and the professionals that operate the day-to-day functions of schools. They're accountable, and they're the leading individuals that lead the communities. They provide community leaderships and oversight to provide an opportunity for the public to engage in ensuring that local schools are implementing the value of vision and needs of the students that are served in those individual communities. That's why school boards matter.
And, you know, it's where so many of us meet democracy, right? As parents, we tend to know our school board members maybe more than we know the city council, And yet, we have instances this past year where the school boards exercising their right to govern themselves got, stepped into some pretty controversial areas related to transgender, related to discussions of Harvey Milk and such. Tell me what you think of that. Is that the school boards, Chino Hills School Board, or the Temecula School Board, and I'm sure others, is that what they should be doing?
I'm not going to focus on any one individual school board. I think for me, it's, school boards have a responsibility to govern based upon the policies and procedures and guidelines outlined in ed code, and that they have a responsibility to ensure that there is an equitable publication for all student, education for all students, that there are guidelines for curriculum adoption, and if you follow those, then some of these conversations that districts have gotten into wouldn't necessarily be at the place that they are at this moment in time. There are practices in place for community to engage in the conversation of what is in the textbooks. There are opportunities for teachers to play a strong role in what's in the textbooks. There is a place for board members to go through an adoption process, and that if we're following the policies and bylaws and the guidance that CSB has outlined in numerous documents and publications, that boards would not be in the place that they're currently in, and that we have to remember that it's a local control responsibility, and that we have to give the ability for boards to adopt textbooks that meet all of students' needs, and we have to take that in consideration.
Well, so Marshall Tuck, Ed Voice obviously has a voice here in Sacramento, and at the local level as well. What's your view of this issue that was raised in Assembly Bill 1078 this past year, and also 1314, a bill that was not heard, but obviously 1078 was and got through?
Yeah, so first, thanks for having me here at Capital Weekly. I appreciate you all putting this conversation on to focus on our kids and their education because I'm a 20-year-plus participant in trying to improve our public schools in the state, both as somebody who's led some school systems, has gotten involved in different levels of public policy and politics, and also as a parent of a sixth-grade student. So I've been in that journey on multiple fronts. I think when thinking about complicated issues in education, I try to start with the goal. I mean, the goal is to make sure every child who's born in this state, I think born in this country, ideally over time born in this world, is given the skills, the academic skills, the social-emotional skills, to be able, when they become adults, to have a shot at opportunity, and to be able to live the lives they want to lead, and also to have the skills to be a part of a collective community and society. And I know that children learn when they are believed in, when they feel relevant, when they are loved, and I believe that any actions by local school boards, in the case of the laws you mentioned, which are banning certain books potentially, or excluding certain books from being included, when they're books that certain children see themselves in, is just not good for learning. Like, we need to make sure our curriculum has our kids of all different shapes, sizes, and perspectives, and races, and identities, where they can see themselves in the curriculum. Because when you see yourself in the curriculum, it's more likely that you will learn, and you'll be excited about who you are and build that confidence you need to be successful. So I think it's important that, and it's not many school districts in the state, but if there are times where a school district very locally is making a decision that would make a child not feel safe about their own identity, or prevent a child from seeing their identity in our textbooks, I think the state needs to step in. I think that this, you know, public schools are, in our constitution, equitable right to public education, so it is not just a local responsibility, it's a state responsibility. And I was happy to see the state step up and take action in the cases that, in some cases, were not in support of what some of the local school districts decided, and respectfully think that they made the right decision.
So, Rich Zeiger, from your years in the, working in the education field in the Department of Education, how would you expect the California Department of Education to handle such matters?
Well, that's, that's a really interesting question. I think the California Department of Education has done what it's, what it should be doing, which is to act on behalf of state policy, to take care of the curriculum, take care of the way kids are being educated. I'd kind of like to go, you know, the role of school boards has changed markedly over the years, and I think is continuing to evolve, and I'd kind of like to go through a little of that because I think it might help explain why we are where we are on some of these issues. I'm old enough to remember when school boards not only spent the money they were given, but raised the money. They could actually increase taxes on properties on their own vote, simple majority vote of a school board, could raise property taxes, and collect the money they needed to run their schools. That created, I think, from a systemic point of view, the right kind of balance, that is the people that are raising the money or spending the money, and it creates the right tension over how you do that. That all changed with Prop 13, which put a cap on property taxes, and the state took over the funding of schools. That diminished the school board's abilities because it couldn't change easily, at least on its own, the amount of money it had to run its own schools. It became the decider, the allocator of the funds that they were given. And the other thing to remember is that there's a sort of a law of nature in governance that he who pays the piper calls the tune. It's actually life in general. But if the state is giving away the money, giving the money, the state's going to want to put conditions on how it's spent. And so, over the years, it slowly increased its control over the school's content, leaving a little bit less for local school boards to do. And I agree with Amy that this, these are a point of first contact that many citizens get with their government. Now, it's not true everywhere. In LA, LA's such a big place that you don't know your school board member any more than you, than maybe you know your councilman. It might be even easier to know your councilman in LA. But in many of our school districts, we have 1,000 school districts in the state, in many of our school districts, you know who those people are. They're your neighbors, they're your friends, they're the friends of your friends. And so, it is not surprising to me, as we move along through this time, that they get wrapped up in these kinds of political issues that are really, in many ways, sort of external to the task that they're assigned to perform. These issues that we talked about in Temecula and Chino, and some of these others, these are people that are proposing solutions for a problem that has yet to be identified. I mean, I'm pretty confident about that. The number of people that are actually intimately involved in this is an issue. The parent who is shocked to discover that their child is, you know, wants to identify a different gender at school, and they don't know about it, I think is a relatively small number of people they were talking about. And so, but the issue becomes very large, and it's part of what's become a kind of a nationalized politicization of the school board system, where the school boards are supposed to be, you know, concentrating on, okay, how do I make the best allocation of the resources I have to educate the kids that are in my district? That in itself is a tough enough job. But I would add that I think over time, that's going to push again towards the state. The state's going to be sending, setting more of the rules to the detriment of the local districts. When the state adopted the local control funding formula, this was a Jerry Brown proposal. Jerry was a big believer that government should be at the, at the local level as much as possible, and he insisted that that allocation of those new funds, which were designed to equalize education throughout the state, right? We're going to give more money to this district because it has tougher kids to educate than we give to this district, which has easier kids to educate. So it was a state initiative to equalize things. He still insisted that what money was allocated was done locally. When Jerry left office, I think we'd begun to see that erode. You're starting to get more categorical programs brought back into the system. And for those of you who don't know, categorical is says, "We're going to give you this much money, and you've got to spend it on this program." Okay? The one thing that the Department of Education does really well is track that money, by the way. Really good at that. Get money, give it to you for this, we make sure that you've got it. One of the few things they do really well. And there was also something of a change that came about with Prop 98, which removed from the Department of Education considerable amount of control over the system, and pushed that out into the county offices that Amy uses. We can have a long conversation about whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. It makes me a little anxious because it created this incredible bureaucracy in the middle of the system instead of at the top of the system. Anyway, those are, that's sort of the context, and I think it's why, it's why school districts can get easily distracted by these issues, because the amount of bandwidth they have to do the other things is minimized, and that creates openings for these kinds of, well, I'll call them peripheral conversations about the education system.
So, that's interesting. So, peripheral or not, the legislature passed 1078, AB 1078. The School Boards Association did not take a stand on that issue. I mean, but I'm sure it was the focus of great internal debate, whether, you know, what to do about it. Maybe you can provide a little insight as to why, as to how that decision to stay neutral on that bill came about?
Actually, we opposed 1078.
Oh, you opposed it?
We opposed it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, it wasn't personal. We worked with the author, and we really wanted to talk about securing some amendments to it because the bill had some unattended consequences that interfered with local control and responsibilities, and may make it harder to address the actual textbooks insufficiency. So there are practices in place for textbook adoption. There's the Williams Act, which requires sufficiency to happen in August, September, and then boards have to have a resolution of the textbooks that are actually, that they have sufficient textbooks for all students. If not, they have to have a plan to actually provide them. The bill also, one of the reasons we opposed the bill was that it wanted to label and put school board members' names on the website for those districts that had insufficient textbooks, and to call them out, which we felt was not an appropriate call-out of those individuals. And lastly, the requirements that the governing board have to get the approval of the state board before they actually adopted a textbook. So we felt that that was, you know, stepping beyond the local control for what worked for the students. You know, as I said earlier, we are a large state with a variety. You've got LA, as you mentioned, is very different from Palermo, California. It's a very different, unique set of population of students, and they have very different needs. And so, local boards have the authority to then adopt texts that meet the requirements that are outlined. And 1078 stood against some of those core pieces. We did find agreement on some things, and so while, you know, while we didn't support completely, we did have some agreement on some of the things, and were able to work with the author to amend, to improve the bill.
Ed Voice did not get involved in that. Why not?
Well, first, newer to the job, so to be crystal clear, the organization was about a year kind of dormant, so I took the job not too long ago. But I think both personally, and I can say "we," it's after the fact because we weren't there, support the legislation. I think there are times where the state needs to step in. I mean, again, the education system is a balance. It's a balance of state direction and expertise. It's a balance of local engagement through a school board, through, and participating in your own school, as if you're a parent or a citizen in the neighborhood. And that entire balance is focused, in my opinion, on making sure that that relationship between teachers and students, and counselors and students, in classrooms and schools is as effective as possible. Like, that, you know, we have this big system, state, local-controlled district. It's still pretty simple, which is how to make sure children feel safe, comfortable, motivated, understood, loved, believed in in classrooms, and how to make sure the adults who are supporting them most directly, teachers, counselors, principals, have the ability and the room and the tools to successfully educate them to build the right academic skills and build the right social-emotional skills. And I think there are times where if a local, in the part of that balance, if a local school district is making decisions, in this case, decisions to take out certain books, in other cases, making decisions to not let children be comfortable with who they are and be comfortable at school with who they are, with concerns of that being an issue outside of school with family. Like, if those decisions are made locally, that, in my opinion, and I think in our opinion, makes it very difficult for the state to deliver on what is its constitutional responsibility, which is equitable education, access to public education. And so I think in those cases, the state needs to step in, so was glad that they did. And again, I know these are difficult issues, but they're important. Because if a child is not feeling, if they are not feeling comfortable with who they are in a classroom, it is hard to learn algebra, you know? And if a child doesn't see themselves in a history book and their journey, it's pretty hard to get motivated and excited about history, pretty hard to get motivated and excited about civics, and pretty hard to ultimately lead them to, when they graduate, to be people who are going to participate in this democracy in the way it can help us be better tomorrow than we were yesterday. And so that's where I think it is important on, not on all issues, I mean, I agree, that we, local schools need to make certain decisions, but there are certain fundamental core decisions that need to be discussed. And so, yeah, we, both I personally, and we support that legislation, and hopefully we can find that right balance where local communities feel like they're engaged, where the state's making sure everyone's getting a quality education, and hopefully have more discussion as a state in the media, because there's a lot of conversation, a lot reported, both on TV and, you know, in the papers about these issues in Chino and Temecula, and not a lot reported about the fact that a third of low-income kids in the state can't read a grade level, and what are we doing urgently and aggressively about that? You know, so I think really focusing on the fundamental issues of the inequities in this state, and the number of kids who are graduating in public schools not with those core academic skills to be able to really access opportunity, we'd like to see a lot more dialogue and focus from the media on those issues than some of these cultural issues, which I agree with Richard, are more one-offs versus kind of throughout the entire system.
Interesting. So, in the past, Ed Voice, the school boards have been focus of, you know, the battle over charter public schools versus not charter public schools. Certainly that played out hugely in Los Angeles Unified School District Ford races. What's your view of that? Is that going to continue now that you're at Ed Voice, or will there be a shift, do you think?
Shift for the organization or for the sector?
Shift for the organization.
Yeah, so first I start with that, public education in California, it's 90% district-run schools, it's 10% charter schools, and that's our public school system. We have 600,000 kids in charter schools in the state, which is a big number, but we have, you know, almost 5.4 million in district public schools. So I think of, again, my underlying fundamentals are all kids deserve a quality public education. I think that most kids are in district schools, that's where most of the focus should be, and I think that quality charter public schools have a role to play in our state because they're a part of our state at this point in juncture. And what's to me most important, regardless of the governing structure, regardless if it's a district public school or charter public school, regardless of a decision's coming from a state or a school district, are we effectively teaching our children to believe in themselves? Are we effectively teaching our children to read? Are we effectively teaching our children to have the foundational numeracy skills to be strong problem solvers? And how do we make sure that the dialogue, both at the state level and at school board levels, are focused there? And the one thing I do want to say, I understand that people have different opinions about some of these cultural issues, but like, there are other options in this state. There is a, you know, homeschool option, there is a private school option. I'm not saying that those are options that I take for my son, but the public school system funded by taxpayers of the state, it needs to create a system that people feel welcome, supported, and are educated. Like, that's why we pay our taxes to pay for it. So I strongly believe that we've got work to do, both at the state and the local level, to improve that, whether it's a district school or charter school.
Amy, how does that play out in your world? The, you know, sort of ongoing battle between charter public schools and not charter public schools?
I think it's less of a battle than we actually think it is. I think that, you know, it's a 90-10%, you know, the 90% of public education schools and 10% charter. As a board member, we authorize a couple of charter schools, and I will say that, you know, our goal as board members is to graduate students and prepare them to be career and college-ready. And I think if we keep that as a focus of what we're trying to do, whether it's in a charter, or whether it's a public charter or a public school, then that's the eye on the prize. We want to prepare kids to be critical thinkers. We want to offer them an opportunity to get an education in an environment that supports their individual needs. We authorize a charter school that focuses on college and career education, and has a strong dual-enrollment program with our community college, where students graduate with classes that provide them a path to college. That's a phenomenal opportunity, whether they go to a four-year college or where they graduate in two years. So I think that we have that playing out throughout the entire state. We have a couple of districts that are, you know, in the news, and I go back to the first panel in highlighting that if we focus more on what some of the schools are doing that are amazing, we would discover that public education is really providing high-quality education to many students, and while there are still gaps, public education has been underfunded for years. And we can't expect in the last 10 years, with the implementation of LCFF and getting equity to the schools that need the resources to provide students the programs that they need, and as I talked about earlier, we are still in the mid-range in the nation, and we're the fourth-largest economy in the world. If we were actually funding education, I can imagine what we could potentially do. And so I don't want to pit charters against public education because they're public charters. I think we need to work collectively with the eye on the prize, that we want to graduate students career and college-ready with what they need to get there.
Do you think there needs to be an expansion of Prop 98? Do you need?
I don't think--
I mean, how do we, how do you get more money to public schools? And Prop 98, you know, last time I checked, the schools get, you know, 40% of the general fund budget, a lot of money.
Prop 98 is the base, it's the floor. We're not at the ceiling, and we need to look at alternative options. I do not want to diminish other programs or make it a competition. You know, earlier in the panel, they talked about, you know, winning at all costs, or the survival of the fittest, and I don't want to pit that. I think we need to look, and look as a state, and as a system, and look at the transformation that we could potentially do to provide the adequate resources to truly educate and provide a comprehensive program for all students.
Rich, you have ideas?
Yeah, I actually, I think Marshall may be shocked to hear that. I actually think that this dispute between charters and traditional public schools, it's kind of yesterday's conversation.
I agree strongly. I'm not shocked at all to hear--
Maybe the first time that he and I have agreed on almost anything in all this time. But there, first of all, the system has changed in terms of how you go about picking, establishing charter schools, that it's made a little more sense. In the early days, which is when I was at the department, it was kind of the Wild West. You could, you could start up charters all over the place, and the state and the federal government would give you big chunks of money, and they may or may not have been well-done, or even stayed in business. In fact, I did a study, which alas, got no publicity anywhere. We had a study done about how much we spent on charter schools, and we did a quick study in like a four-year period. We spent a billion dollars. And remember, this is 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago. It was real money then. A billion dollars was real money. We spent a billion dollars on charter schools that did not stay open more than two years. So we were just flooding the zone with money for charters. And it turned out we were flooding to a lot of bad, well, we had this joke going that you could, you could move from county to county, try to set up a charter school, well, pretend you were setting up a charter school, get all these grant monies, and then on opening day, you could just go, oh, no kids, guess we'll fold it up, move to the next county, do the same thing again. That was, by the way, if your intent was correct, perfectly legal. And so, we've actually sort of changed the rules a little bit, so we're keeping an eye on these things. And as a result, I think the charters we're getting are, at least from a fiscal standpoint, better put together, and they are, I think, doing more to meet specific needs, such as Amy was talking about. We're going to set up a charter school that does this. It would be nice if, from my point of view, if you could do that within the traditional districts, but it's often hard. It's often hard to make those kinds of changes. And so, having an alternative way of doing that is, I think, useful, and I think this conversation's kind of stabilized at the level it's at, and they're more interesting conversations.
Well, so that, of course, raises a question. If it's, if charter schools is yesterday's battle, good. What's today's, from Ed Voice's point of view?
You know, unfortunately, yesterday's--
And maybe it's not a battle. Maybe it's all kumbaya these days.
Well, I think the three of us agree that it's just not a top issue. And I think the issue today is unfortunate, the same as the issue yesterday. We have a state that does not work for most low-income kids, that are disproportionately black and Latino. Like, that's, if you look on any metric, you look at the data 20 years ago, you look at the data today on proficiency rates for English, you have massive gaps between higher-income and lower-income kids. You have massive gaps between whites and Asians and Latinos and blacks, and that has been consistent for a long period of time. You look, most recent state test data, 66% of kids who are not identified as economically disadvantaged are at grade level in English, and only 35% of kids identified as lower-income are at grade level in English. Similar for math, 54% higher income, 20, I think it's 22% lower income. If you look at graduation rates in terms of college prep graduation rates, you see similar gaps, 65% to 34%. And these are not new gaps. These gaps have been consistent for a long period of time. So, since I've been in this work, you know, since 2002, my focus has not been governance, or state, or local, or district, or charter. It's pretty straightforward. We have a state that's two Californias. The state has the best jobs in the world, this incredible economy that's only open to some. And our public education system collectively, we all, and I've been working on it, we've all been working on it for a long time, we have more to do because we need to teach our kids how to read effectively and have strong analytical skills and strong civic skills, and have a chance at a shot. So that, to me, is the fundamentals. Now, how you break that down, you know, I think we've made progress on expanding to TK for All. I think kids need to start earlier. I think kids need to start earlier. Most wealthier kids, they pay for, you know, families, they pay for their kids to have pre-K at age two, three and four. And so we need to get that for all kids in this state. We need to focus on early literacy. We, we have a better, we know actually how to teach kids how to read much more effectively today than we did 15 years ago, yet we're not doing that in all classrooms. That needs to change. We need to make sure that our highest poverty schools, which has been a consistent problem for decades, have consistent quality teachers in front of our kids. We have much higher rates of absenteeism, much higher rates of turnover, much higher rates of unqualified teachers in our highest poverty schools compared to our higher income schools. So to me, the, the, the battle of tomorrow unfortunately is the same battle of yesterday, which is how do we get this state truly focused on educating all children and ensuring that all kids have opportunity? And that means a direct focus on lifting up children from low-income communities that are disproportionately Latino and Black.
Well, so Amy, this is your burden. How do you, talk about a few steps?
I think it's more important now than ever for local boards to set the direction, to really engage their communities for what they want for their students, to look at the individual data with their school board, with their superintendent and staff of analyzing who are the students we're serving and what do we need to do to ensure, through the, through the partnerships with the county offices of education, through organizations like CCEE, to look at continuous improvement for all students. So setting that local direction. The next piece is, I think, establishing the structure. So by that, I mean establishing policies and practices that govern the board of how they move forward and how they make decisions and make the public aware of that so that we can truly engage in a democracy at the grass level. So we can invite parents in to have the conversation, understanding that there's a law and a process to uphold, but that we want to have their decision and their support and engagement in educating their students. Because parents are first and foremost, their child's first educator. And we have to honor and respect that and engage them in the process. We also need to provide support as a board to the superintendents that are doing the hard work and the teachers that are doing the hard work, day after day showing up to provide these students with not necessarily all the funding that they need. We, funding is still an issue and we need to address that. We need to advocate not only at the state level, but at the federal level for adequate funding for our schools and for our, as we heard earlier, for our teachers and educators, including paraeducators. And that we have to do this by sharing the accountability, talking about the things that are working. There are schools and districts that are high poverty that are having success. We need to share those successes and we need to provide that information so that we learn from one another. Education often happens in silos and we looked at it as a competition years ago when we had the report cards, that they were pitting one district against the other, which one's better and where students go. That's gone. We have LCFF. We have the ability to support schools and districts, to learn from one another, to implement those best practices and teaching practices. Because the way you teach a classroom with high EL students to read is very different than you teach a different subset of students. And we have to address that and provide teachers the professional development they need to meet those individual students' lead, needs. And lastly, we need to demonstrate leadership. We need to stand firm and united as a board to talk to our, to talk to the public, to talk to those individuals that elected us and to let them know what's happening in the schools, both the good and the things that are our challenges. And to make it very transparent, as we do when we meet once or twice a month in a public forum, to do our business. And we need to continue doing that. And we need to partner with the media and press to actually support us in educating some of those pieces. Not just the ugly things that we want to call out, but the things that are actually working well. Like the amazing career tech education programs that are going on, they majored in partnerships with the community colleges. California students that graduate can receive two years free education in a community college. And many people don't understand that. We've worked really hard for a TK 14 program in the state, the Cradle to Career. We have to stand on that and partner even harder now together to implement and make that happen.
So one of the, one of the points you made is you have to partner with, with the press. Well, you know, back when dinosaurs roamed and I first started in journalism, there were those of us who covered school boards. I think that that's becoming rare. I mean, school boards are kind of one of the last things that, that local paper, local, local papers cover. But not always. I mean, I see it in my local paper. I don't see stories about the school board. So how do you deal with that? Or do you deal with that? Or does it just make it so much easier that you don't have a, you know, a, a young reporter asking you annoying questions?
Well, I'll age myself. I also roamed the earth with those dinosaurs when there was actually, in edu, was in education, when reporters actually came to board meetings. I think that what we see is if you look, there are county offices of education required. They actually put out report cards, district put out report cards. There's a requirement in the LCFF to actually engage public and to educate them. There's parent reports that go out in parent-friendly terms in multiple languages. I think we need to continue doing that and that we need to host, many, many districts or counties host forums for education to educate and engage their partners. And I think that we need to continue doing the grassroots piece of educating, as well as go back to some of the times that we partner with, with Capital Weekly and, and other publications like Ed Source and Ed Voice to actually get the message out there.
Well, certainly Ed Voice is doing, has done a very good job. But I don't know, Rich, what, what's your take on, on this? I mean, as, as, as an old news person yourself?
Both a journalist and a, and a state bureaucrat, not at the same time, I might add. But I, I do think that there's an incredible shortage of coverage of school districts. And that's as much a factor of what's happened to newspapers over the years as, as anything else. Any newspaper of any size and even smaller, used to have an education beat reporter. And I, I think if you look out there now, you can count probably on one hand the number of people who are actually devoted to covering education. So I, I, that has, as resources amongst newspapers in the, in the country have diminished. I think that coverage has, has gone away. But I, I hate to, I, I want to drag this conversation back because I'm, I'm a systems sort of guy. And one of the, one of the problems that we have is we're pretty good, and I think we'd all agree, on identifying where the problems are and what we need to do and, and, you know, all the things, all the, all the changes we need to make to get things better. The problem I think we have in California is how do you do it? And part of that is that the system itself is so fragmented. Amy talks about school boards coming up and meeting the challenge, but school boards can't create the resources to meet those challenges. So you get stuck from the very beginning. And then, so you have to move to the state level to create the resources. But then people want, if they, if they're going to give you more resources, now they want oversight. So you think about the local control funding formula. We created this whole system where we're going to evaluate through, through LCAPS. We're going to evaluate all of these things. And we thought that this would help drive the conversation to the local school board. I think over the years, the development of LCAP has turned into a bureaucratic routine.
Tell, tell me what LCAP is, Rich?
LCAP is the Local Control-
Accountability-
Accountability Plan. So each, you got this chunk, big chunk of new money from the state and you were supposed to develop a plan that showed how you were going to be meeting the needs of the very students we keep talking about, right? The low-income, kids that are having difficult time getting going. You're supposed to drive towards that. And we set up this entire system, big part moved to the county office of education to police that. And, and it was supposed to foster this conversation, increase conversation with school boards. And I don't, you can tell me if you think that that's true. I think it's become another bookkeeping task that districts have to perform at large expense that occasionally has some interesting conversations perhaps.
I'll disagree.
Okay, so we can get, we can get, we can get some disagreement on that subject. But it, it, it's very difficult when you are creating something from the top to get it to be fully invested in at the bottom. Each schools, each school and each district's going to want to do it differently. I was at the department when we did the first year of this. And I've never told anybody about this. It was a mess.
I agree.
Yeah, it was so, totally a mess. It, you don't, I don't think any of the county offices know. We had maybe a dozen counties that our department decided, you've gone through this process and it's, stinks. It does not meet the tenor of the law. And they wanted me to send out letters, I was the chief deputy then, send out letters to each of these counties saying, you've failed. And I'm, and I'm sitting here going, okay, first year on this, right? Do we want to say, send out letters saying, counties don't know how to do this? Do we want to send that letter out? We've just adopted this plan. We've pushed an unheard of amount of money into the hands of districts to deal with, with low-income kids as we should have done many years before. And suddenly we're going to send out letters on, so we didn't. I mean, the, the truth of the matter is, we stopped and went back to those counties and said, let's sit down with you and help you do that. One of the problems with that is because of the way the system is set up, the state didn't have the resources to go to the counties and do that. Nobody wants to give the state department of education any money. There is something to be said if you're dealing with systemic problems across the state to having some top-down work on, done on that. And we in California eschew that. We do not do that. We think that that's somehow bad. And it creates, to my mind, inefficiencies and waste. So that you've got counties, county offices, some of them are great and some of them are miserable and some of them become better and some of them become worse. And, and the, you know, there's, you lack this sort of level of consistency. The other thing you don't get is a process for deciding allocation of resources from a more centralized standpoint, except for the big school board across the street. The only group we've got that makes those decisions is the big school board across the street. And that makes everything this incredibly awful political process that we have to go through. And education systems thrive when we have a general consensus about where we need to be moving and everybody keeps moving that way. Everybody keeps moving year after year. We need more money to drive the system? Okay, let's keep coming up with more money to drive the system. You need to hire better teachers? We talked about, you talked about that a little earlier. Okay, how are we going to make that happen? We talked, you're talking about salaries for teachers. Salaries are set by local school districts. What does that do? School districts don't have resources. They can't pay them more, right? The state thinks they should be paid more. State's got to come up with money to do it. Does that mean you need to set salaries for teachers at the state level? Maybe, right? The, the argument seemed to be made, Jerry Brown was, argued that everything should be better at the local level. And there's some, isn't that, that's not right. Much as I love Jerry Brown and much as I think he's incredibly smart human being, the right answer to that question is things should be done where they should be done. Some things should be done at the local level. Some things have to be done at other levels. And, and that, we do not as a state put any money into, or almost no money, into figuring these answers out. Okay, I got money to invest. Do I create a new fourth grade? Do I cut the size of classrooms from 30 kids to 15 kids? These are trade-offs. What are the answers to the question? Have we done the research? There are, California's the size of a country. There are countries that do this research. And there's, but we don't. We don't do that. We collect all this data, but we don't do an analysis of it. Now, Marshall and his group comes along, finds one that they find interesting. They pull out some data. They make an analysis. There are a couple academic institutions to do. But there's no relationship between the people actually, in theory, who should be charged with making the decisions and the research that they collect and should be using for that. So I, I think these, some of these systemic things make it really difficult for us to make the kind of progress that we're, that everybody agrees we want to make.
And Amy, what do you think about this notion that Rich is talking about?
I think we've come a long way. I think that, you know, the first year I was involved in education was, I've been involved in education for years and I, I saw the onset of LCFF and, and, and it was difficult. There was a lot of plans that came in that were not approved, that were not supportive. And it was partially because in the past, it was that compliance mindset. We're going to give it to CDE. We're going to check a box and we're going to take the money and spend it and we're going to do what we said we're going to do, which is that checks and balance, which CDE is really good at knowing where the money goes. And so for me, LCFS has transformed over the last 10 years. You have communities engaging, and I've been involved in this work at a local level where community members have come in, parents, English, non-English speaking parents have joined in and had a conversation about what is right for their students. Parents have come and talked about the services and, and provisions. And the LCFF is around three areas. The LCAP has the conditions of learning, so the things that students need to meet their needs. It has engagement. It requires parent and student engagement. It wants the schools to listen to what students need to be successful. And lastly, it has achievement. It wants achievement for all students. It looks at college and career. It looks at the facilities. It looks at access to courses. It recognizes those districts at a local level. They have to be accountable in eight different areas in these plans to ensure that they're meeting every single demographic and student that is identified in the LCFF. Every school district in the state of California receives a base amount. Those that have higher concentration of students receive supplemental and concentration dollars. And again, each district then has to be accountable for plans for their individual schools in a collective means to show how they're going to report progress over time for those students. So for me, there is systems to make pieces happening. There is transformation happening. You have agencies, as I talked about earlier, CCEE, California Center for Educational Excellence, which is taking this research and working with districts to do root cause analysis and to do extensive data look at what's happening and how it's being implemented to improve our system. That's only been 10 years. We're talking about decades of this, you know, the billions of dollars being allowed to start a charter school when there was no accountability of where that money was going and they open and they close as quick. We now have AB 1505 and other pieces that are in place that school boards are responsible for ensuring that this happens for the students at the local level. Again, as I said, LA and schools in Orange County are very different than a school in Butte County or in Redding, California, or in McFarland, where there's amazing things happening for the students and it's individualized to what those students need and it's facilitated by board members who are governing under the ed code and the policies that it meant instead. So I, I, I agree to disagree.
Okay, there are, there are certainly bright spots.
We should, we should open it up to audience questions and, and Rich, you want to?
I just, I, I think the CCEE is a really interesting-
CCE-
CCEE, the California Collaborative or something?
For educational excellence.
For educational excellence. It's a really interesting thing. And also one of the things that I happened to be around when this was, when we were putting this together. But the idea is that you finally have someplace whose task it is to work with schools and districts to help them improve. Nothing we'd ever have at the state level. It's just sort of extraordinary. And, and, you know, I, I have some arguments with the way the thing was set up. Once again, because of Prop 98, it was not a state agency. Well, it's, it's, it's a, yeah, and it, it's, it's under, technically under the control of a county office. Because we have to route the Prop 98 money through a county office to do that. Because the Prop 98 said you can't give it to the state department of education. So you route that money through there. And so we create all these, we create all these agencies that ought to be logically somehow linked together. And so when Amy starts out her conversation, it's all about how we have to work with each other and how we have to pull all these, it's a, that's an extra burden that is maybe not the best use of the system, is to force this kind of a collaboration that is better or worse, depending on who's collaborating at any given moment, into the system. And so I, I have a little bit different view about how, I'm, I'm not, I think, and you can, you can ask Mr. Thurman about what he thinks when he gets here. I'm not sure the department of edu, there's any hope for the department of education anymore. I don't know what we're doing with it in California. It just, it counts dollars and it's pretty good at that. But there are a lot of state agencies that can count dollars. I don't know that you need a, something called the department of education to do it. Or that at the very least, you should, you should maybe not elect a superintendent and have the governor appoint the superintendent of public instruction so that the governor becomes invested in the actual operation. So-
Well, that's a whole other conversation. Is there, are there questions from the audience?
Really quick wave of hand here. And just really quick, if you, if you looked in your program, you'll notice the names Delane Easton and Roger Nilo were supposed to be on this panel. Things happen and so they are not here. You, you've noticed Rich Zeiger does not look anything like Roger Nilo or Delane Easton. Thanks, Rich, for stepping in at the last minute and loaning all your expertise here. We really appreciate that. I saw a hand go up right here. I saw a hand go up right here. Let's start here.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Lily Starling. I'm the political organizer for SEI Uten to One in the North Valley. My turf goes from Sacramento, Napa Solano, and up to Redding. And I, I wanted to start by saying, I am surprised to hear that anyone thinks the charter school question is settled, and I invite you to come to the California Democratic Convention in a few days, because we've still continued to have very explosive fights about that. But, yeah, I agree, some amazing things are happening in Redding. One of them is that a board of education member turned out a bunch of members of the public to say that LGBTQ kids should be put in a different school so they don't infect the normal kids. And this is my question, if we're leaving it up to communities to dictate where they want to fall in terms of the culture wars, which is another term I reject, it's human rights issues, can we really guarantee that these students that are being targeted can learn reading, writing, and arithmetic, which is a right-wing dog whistle that's being used by Moms for Liberty-type candidates, to say that none of this stuff should be addressed in the curriculum and we should only focus on these basic skills? I don't see those two things as something that can be separated, and I'm wondering what you think about that.
So, there's a reference to Moms for Liberty. This is a conservative organization that's, well, beyond conservative organization that, that is advocating for, you want to explain it?
Sure. They're, they're starting in Florida, they're here now.
Briefly, though, because we have other questions.
Yeah, they, they're basically just trying to return school boards and school districts to a very, very conservative state, using hate rhetoric, and they are very well organized and they are taking over school boards.
Yeah. I'm not sure it's conservative, but, I mean.
It's ultra-right wing is how I would describe it.
Anyway, your views on this?
As I said earlier, I think we agree. I think the state absolutely needs to engage, and I'm glad they have so far, and needs to do it with focus, and I agree with you entirely. If you, if you're a child sitting in a fifth-grade classroom or in an eighth-grade classroom or an 11th-grade classroom, and you don't feel included, and you don't feel that the school is believing in you and caring about you, regardless of what your identity is, if you don't see yourself in the curriculum, then you're not going to learn that well. So, I'm with you. You can't separate literacy from identity and confidence. It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And so, I got, been pretty consistent, like, I think this, the state needs to step in these areas. I think, I think Rich's point is a very good one. There is a balance between local engagement, I think local control is too strong, but we're like, local engagement and state engagement, and there are certain issues in this case, without question. If we're trying to harm kids, there's no local input, the state steps in and makes sure kids have a safe place to be. And a side note, I think we all weren't saying that the charter school issue is settled. I think it's much less than it was yesterday. Hopefully, we're all moving on, I think, with the, the conversation here.
Is there another question?
Right over here.
Hello. Hi, I, I am Christina Laster, and I have a question about allocation of resources and the equitable allocation of resources. And so, I continue to hear the term low income, but we noticed over the past year that local area median income has shifted dynamically. And so, if I'm a family of three with $25,000, that's very low, extremely low. But then, if I live in the county of, Orange County, Los Angeles, San Francisco, you know, you can be anywhere between $80,000 and $120,000 and be considered low income. And so, what does that conversation look like at the local level, where people are having very real and different experiences, but we're saying low income, right? And how are we accounting for the equitable allocation of resources at the local level for those different and varying experiences?
Amy, or Rich, or anybody?
Amy may want to tackle this a little better. One of the things is California's program, the local control program, and the allocation of resources is not done like the federal program. It's not tied to an individual student. It's tied, that is, I give dollars for this kid because, because of this kid and their, and their criteria, and that money needs to be sort of spent on that kid. It's not done that way. It's allocated as a group. And there, the state uses placeholders to determine these things. So, it was, as I recall, it was a free and reduced lunch program. If you qualified for the free and reduced lunch program, and of course, we don't require anything for free and reduced lunches anymore, but there is a federal requirement, if somebody meets that program, that kid is called low income. So, whatever the feds say that is, that's what we call low income. And, and there are other ones, English language learners there, and foster kids are the two other main groups that we call. So, it is a rough, and I would say rough is a good description, it's a rough descriptor of the kid we're trying to reach, and then the decision of how to do the allocation is left to the local school board.
Soci, and the, the technical term is socioeconomically disadvantaged, and, and there is the metric in this, in the scale of which it is. And we are, it's being reconfigured at this moment because of the, no longer the requirement, California being unique and providing free breakfast and lunch to all, there's not as many families are actually completing the federal paperwork. And so, that is becoming a challenge. But that is something that Department of Education works with districts to determine those, those metrics and means, as well as foster youth and homeless.
The question is, is that a good way to do it? I, I, it's a little, it's hard, I don't know. It, it's, it's easy comparatively, it's easy, it doesn't require a lot of paperwork. So, like figuring out the size of your family and the location that you're living in as opposed to just total income level, that's a much more complicated. Are we going to ask everybody? Are we going to require each kid to have their parents fill out a form, saying, and it's just bureaucratically, do you miss things because of that? You do. So, it's a trade-off, and I don't know, I don't, the good answer to those kinds of things is, escapes me. I really don't know.
There are, there are some school districts that are, that are doing more targeted, so they're, they're that initial cut score, they're looking at kind of deeper rates of transient seeing communities, deeper rates of poverty, deeper rates of crime. So, there actually are, like in LA, they've come up with a thing called SENE, like where they're using a number of different other factors in addition to just a straight cut score of, of low income. And I think it's something that, kind of Rich's point, systemically, the state should every couple of years be looking at, you know, is our current definition for economically disadvantaged the right decision? Like, because it's, because so much is driven by that, that's an issue that, in the ideal, if we are systemically strategic, we'd be coming back to that every few years and saying, is this the right definition? What districts have come up with new formulas that are working even better to truly target those kids of greatest need? And then, how do you potentially pass state policy to make that happen in other school districts?
And that's where the role of board member comes in, in this, in this, the local and the state advocacy, is that board members participate in educating, and it's a role that CSBA plays, is to gather all the voices, 5,000 elected school board members in the state of California. Again, the uniqueness of each happening and bringing up the, the pain points that are similar and the same, and how do we then address them collectively?
Is there a question over here? Any other question?
Yes, we have a question right here.
Hi, Peter Elliott. So, I have a question. There's a few factors recently that, you know, maybe could call in terms of budget-related. So, recently, the state projected that K-12 enrollment will be going down by a substantial amount over the next 10 years, maybe 700,000, while the LCFF kind of locks in a certain amount. Is this, could you like disavow me of the notion that this might free up some more funding to be spent on an individual student? Like, is this not a cause for better outcomes over the next 10 years in terms of how much it's going to? I mean, I'm definitely a layman as far as the LCFF goes.
So, fewer, fewer kids mean?
Yeah, with fewer kids.
Better schools?
No, with fewer kids, it actually means less money, because currently California's system is ADA-based, which is an average daily attendance base. So, it means with students being actually enrolled and attending school, then you receive the money. So, with declining enrollment means schools will technically receive less money.
Unless we change the laws, because the laws are based on us as voters, right? So, if we know the state needs more funding for public schools, we should get working and get organized sooner rather than later to make sure that when enrollment goes down, we don't decrease funding, we actually work towards getting to what our kids deserve, which is, which is more funding today. But that requires us all to politically engage. Otherwise, to Amy's point, it'll, well, the way we've done it is ADA, so less money for the system versus, no, let's take this chance, we have less kids, but let's actually do more for those kids that are in the system and, and same overall dollars. So, we got, we got some political work to do.
Yeah. Well, so, our, our time is about up. You know, I, I guess the, the overriding point of, if, if we could sum this up, is that school board's role is to focus on reading, writing, and arithmetic, and that, to the extent that has happened in San Francisco and maybe is happening in Chino Hills and Redding and Temecula, that, that when school boards get off that mission, that's when, that's when things go off the rails, maybe. Anyway, I thank you all. Rich and Amy and Marshall, thank you all for taking the time to join Capital Weekly and, and this panel.
And thank you all for coming. We appreciate all the folks in this room, working for our kids, so thank you for coming.
And for everybody here in the room.